Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the WNESU School Board Meeting.
Thank you.
Your life.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Superintendent Union Board of Directors. At 6:30 on Wednesday, December 13th, we'll be called to order. And we'll go quickly, we'll start on the screen to have people introduce themselves again for benefit of the public, especially those who might watch after the fact. So I'll start Lynn with you, just an introduction please.
Lynn Morgan from Athens Grafton.
Thank you Lynn. Arty.
Arty Merrill from Athens Grafton.
Great. Chris?
Chris Kibbe from Rockingham and Chair of the Finance Committee and Vice Chair of this board.
Thank you. Great. Teen?
Teen BLC Westminster School Board.
Outstanding. Jason?
Jason Terry, Bellas Falls Junior High School Board, live in Rockingham.
Like staff Rockingham.
June Street High School Board.
Andy Haas Superintendent.
Cheryl Charles, Chair of the Board Westminster.
Crystal Lambert, Clerk of the Board, Rockingham.
Jim McCullough, Rockingham.
Stacy Alexander, Director for Student Services.
Jim Bizina, Finance.
Ricky Adams, Technology.
Okay, thanks for inviting. With that, let me see if there are any adjustments to the agenda. I have one. Anybody else? I'd like to add under Old Business, just a quick update on the six-month review of the superintendent, just an update for everybody on that. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay, well, let's open it up to Communications and Public Convent, if there are any. Okay. So with that, we'll welcome Karen Blanchard, a quick introduction.
Karen Blanchard, Westminster School Board.
Perfect, thank you. And then the next item is to review and approve the minutes from November 15th. I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 15th.
Thank you. Discussion. Okay, I have a question. We've got to correct Jean's spelling, but it's also spelled the same way that it is on our stuff, and so is that what we want to do? I'm not sure that it was not spelled right. Yes, it's looking correct to me in the 15th. But I couldn't find it in the 18th or less spell that yet. I think that's fine. Okay, yeah. So with no substantive, not to say spelling isn't substantive, but with no corrections to the minutes, I'll call for a vote, and since we're some remote, some in the room, I'll do a roll call. So how do you vote to approve the minutes or not? Lynn?
Approve.
Thank you. Arty?
Approved.
Teen?
Yes.
Thank you. Chris?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And we're done. All right, unanimously approved, thank you. Oh, with that, then our first report is from the Superintendent Mr. Ross.
So I'll try and keep this real brief, just because I know we're going to be talking budget here later, and that'll probably take the majority of our time. Just a few things, we're moving forward on the HVAC system here at the high school where we're located, so we're just waiting for the final approval from the state, which is more just a clerical piece at this point. We did get a letter from the AOE and from the Department of Environmental Conservation and Department of Health on our error report of Central Elementary School on PCB levels. And so we're very pleased to report that no PCB levels were detected at Central Elementary School. We are still waiting on the results from Bellas Falls and those schools, though they had done those on two separate dates, so we're just waiting for that report. So, and then Saxon's River is the only other school in our SU that needs to be tested, but that is slated to be tested in late 2024, if not 2025, so it's been pushed way out, so. Last week, last Friday, the Southeast Vermont Superintendents, we host an annual breakfast with our regional legislators, and it's a good opportunity for superintendents and legislators to sit down before the session starts for us as superintendents to talk about what we see as priorities and asking our legislators to just be aware of and help advocate for different things. In my report, I included the slideshow that we provided to them. Obviously, reading within our whole region is something that we are all very focused on. We feel that Vermont is kind of falling behind as far as reading, and as a regional group, we are strongly encouraging a movement to a much more research-based reading, which we are doing here in our district, our RSU. Also, just staffing has continued to be a large issue. As you all know, mental health continues to be a large issue, but then we also really wanted, we always focus on career tech ed, which is a big piece within our region, and then also on, excuse me, School Construction Aid, which is a conversation we continue to have with the legislators to look for funding. And then New Solutions is a consultant we brought in to look at our scheduling and how we're providing intervention at both the middle school and the high school, so we've met as a guiding coalition, we met today with individual members of each building to kind of go over some things and finalize the report. New Solutions will be meeting with the high school board December 20th to kind of go over those results and those findings. We still have to schedule a date with the Rockingham Board, but we were anticipating something in January. The middle school schedule is a little different than the high school schedule, not as complex, so some real interesting things coming out of that. And then the, we started off, one of the things I wanted to do this year was do an advisory council with both parents, teachers, but also students. We were able to get one together for some students and staff. We've met a couple of, two months already, just kind of getting to know who we are and kind of putting things out there and getting things back, which was a really great opportunity for me to have those conversations, but we also wanted to hear from students and have some voice, and so we, I went and met with the entire middle school student population and offered for them to join an advisory council, and so I'll be meeting with the middle school group next week, and so we'll be getting to kick that off, and then after the first of the year, we'll be starting another one here at the high school to try and get some voice. Added in there, we're going to be going down, I think we and the Royal, I will be going down and working with the sixth grade teacher at Westminster next week, and having the sixth graders review the mascot policy that is a requirement, which that policy, just to remind everyone real quick, it's around, it can't be discriminatory in any way. The Westminster mascot is a Viking, and so all of our others are a wagon, or eagle, or a carrier, and so therefore, I thought it was a great opportunity for the students to have an opportunity to do some research around, does the Viking violate the policy or not policy, and we'll make recommendations that forward, but we're hoping also at the same time to use that as an opportunity to get some of those students in the leadership role, so. And then also, what we've also provided for you, we did a survey on early release, just to get some feedback from some of our families and our teachers, we provided that information to you all, but we wanted to use that to inform our calendar for next year, and so as a region, we are supposed to all, all the different districts and SUs are supposed to have a similar calendar, and so it's been a very big struggle to get, we sit between the River Valley Tech and the Wyndham Regional Career Center, and at times, they've had two different schedules, and so students of ours, if we choose to go River Valley Tech, the students who go to Wyndham Regional would be on a different holiday calendar, usually it was around the April one, but they still have to go to school. So they, so they lose their break, and so it's required within Vermont, but it's taken a lot of time this year. It looks like we're all on the same calendar for all those three breaks, which is really a big lift. But we also just wanted to make sure we're getting that feedback. So in that survey, we asked families and teachers like, what would be best? What was really interesting is folks thought the Wednesday early release was disruptive, and we're asking for a Friday early release, so that's one of the things we tried to build into our calendar as a draft, and then also just be much, much more aware so that we're not impacting one month with a lot of disruptions, and so like this past November was pretty disruptive, and so we tried to take all that in, it's right now with the teachers and having them review it, so the association has that, and so we're hoping in January that we'll be bringing a calendar back, we'd like the board to weigh in on it and give us a blessing to move forward with that, so families can start planning next year, so. And then we're just gearing up for the holiday break, so we have another full week of school. Next Friday, the 22nd, is an early release day for students, and then we'll be back on the 7th, so. After we try and answer any questions if there are any.
All right, any questions for Ann? With that, thank you, Ann, very much. Jim Bizina will move to Finance.
Yay.
So in Finance.
Do you have any more?
You need more?
No.
In Finance, I just want to point out to you, and there's a, there's a lot of stuff happening, and on page one, I just want to mention, I hope that you realize that all of the subs for all districts go into the SU, and it kind of clouds what's going on, you know, since, since the budget is zero. It has that mystique, like, what's going to happen? Well, we bill that back to each district, which it was different, or which we have one district here, but maybe in the future. So the subs are an issue. Turning on to page two, now, I just want to mention Special Education. I, I think that, I mean, we're going to pick up some costs with special education, because on the revenue side, the state of Vermont wants to get the heck out of the special education business. A, they're trying to gear it down. You'll notice that, that we've got in the middle of the page, Contracted Services, Special Ed Consultant, you've got half million, you've got tuition, half million in the hole. So we're spending some money, and again, this is federal law, as Andy mentioned, there's, you know, three students that have come into the district, A, we didn't know they were coming in, so Stacy has got to pick up the slack and make sure that appropriate IEPs and relative stuff is there. So turning over Psychological, and I'm in the middle of the page, Psychological Services on page three, everybody Finance, and again, as we start to make this a little challenging, what we've done is dumped all Psychological Services in the SU. We didn't move the budgets, because we can't quite do that, but the expense is going in here, and so I, I, I think at the end of the year, some assessment will be going back out to kind of balance this out. No interest.
Jim, could I just like explain, those are the school-based clinicians that he's talking about that, when he said got dumped in there, and that had to do with some of the retirement pieces that we are actually obligated to provide, that we weren't, we can't when they're split up into multiple districts, and so the local budgets already had that money budgeted for their portion, and that just got moved over to the ES.
Yes, thank you, Ethan. Moving on to page four, and I just want to go down the function, which, so you'll see Speech Services. Right now, we're, we're down 140,000, and again, some of that may be just resetting some of the encumbrance fees, and Stacy and I are going to look at that next week. Three quarters of the way down, Physical Therapy, again, we're in the whole three brands. And I've got to check this out, because there's a state retirement, and, and this shows, it's an object code of five, 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 three, one, five, five, three, two, excuse me, two, thirty-two. The only thing that we should be paying, there's the state in trying to balance out their $2 billion deficit, is charging for each new person coming into the retirement system about $1,600 worth. Now, that's the only retirement we really pay for with teachers. The teachers belong to what they call Vistors or Vermont Teachers Retirement System, and they pay out of their own pocket a certain sum of money, and I don't know what it is, 10% or, or so. The district doesn't pay anything, but we do pay this, this tax of new teachers coming into the retirement system, and that's a forever tax, meaning as long as that person is here, you're going to be paying that $1,600 each and every year that they're here. So anyways, I've got to track that down, because I'm not sure why, why it's, it doesn't look like it's, it may be encumbering too much money.
Page five looks good.
Yeah. And just to, just to run you back on to page nine. So right now, I mean, it looks like we're over budget. We're, there's, there's a, there's certainly a concern, and at some point in time, when we get a little closer here, we want to make sure we're leveled up and somewhat close, and at least, let you know how far off the mark we're going to be. What's, what's difficult at this stage is some of what, there's an excess cost that for now, the state is giving us back, so with anything over, is it 60?
62,000.
62,000, so anything over 62,000, and for instance, I'll just touch it, if we sent somebody up to an autistic school up north, they have foundations in Windsor, they have the Hartford, the
The Wilders.
Wilders School, and I mean, those are, those are $150,000 programs, so, so for sure, even though we're expending 150, we're going to get back minus 62, 100% of that, so, and that's hard to know right now, that's, you know, something that will, as we get towards the end, we'll start to reconcile. So I do the last page, the last page in the packet is your revenue, and, you know, I think, I think the revenue, the revenue is coming in okay, you guys are paying all right, keep it up. I, I don't see any area in the revenue where we're going to have a short. As I said, I'm expecting that excess cost will come in higher than what we have budgeted for. Any questions?
I notice you don't have a total projected deficit.
No, I do not, Jim, because I want to make sure the revenue is calculating correctly, but I will say that, I think you're going to be in a hole, the question is how much.
This is a disaster.
The question is how much, and again, I think what we have to do is reset some of, some of the, the monies that we have in a purchase order, and again, because we can't move money now, we've got to go back and, and just reset. For instance, if we're not hiring a teacher, I mean, we can reduce that encumbrance piece and make sure that we've got that available, so it, it will reconcile, but we're not ready to do it yet.
Jim, any questions? Thank you, Cheryl, sorry. Can you explain to everybody what happens when you are in a hole, what happens the next year, or years, or how's that work?
What happens is, and again, I've never experienced it, but what happens is there will be a reassessment to pick up the imbalance, so, you know, if we're out, and again, you know, I was thinking today, as, you know, three years ago, we had big surplus balances, Andy had more money than he knew what they're doing, I mean, there were huge surpluses, and we have worked those down, and again, as we should, I mean, you shouldn't have, you know, a hundred, a million and a half surplus balance, we don't want to be there. As you get closer, though, it becomes a cash issue, and that's where you're trying to balance cash, because we have federal projects, which we're supporting, because we only get paid after that. Now, I will say this, in, in Hartford, where I came from, I kept $2 million of surplus money, because I needed the cash, I mean, we were, we had $48 million of general fund, and along with, you know, another 10 million of federal funds, and the tuitions there, I mean, they didn't come in before, they were billed after, so we're in a similar situation, and it's going to start to tighten now, it's okay, because as I said, you want to be as, as tight as you can with the expense and the revenues, we don't want $2 million balance, so. Does that answer your question, though? I mean, we'll get reassessed.
Yeah, I knew what happened, what happens, I just wanted to make sure everyone else knows what happens, and so the reassessment affects all the other schools.
Yes, but, but we'll try to level it out, which is
There any other questions for Jim? Jim, as it stands right now, one for me, it's looking like we're over spending by about $600,000, and you're saying that we are hoping to be able to adjust that by encumbrances that they may not owe, and we may get some return of revenue for the special education teams, both of which is why it's too soon, but we all need to be watching it really closely.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, I think the excess revenue that we're going to receive, you know, will be 300,000, so I still want to be careful.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So on then, Full Business, which I added, it's simply that by contract, we have built into it for the Executive Committee for the Wyndham WNESU to provide a six-month review for the superintendent. We, the Executive Committee provided the SU Board with a schedule in October that showed that we would begin a survey, broad-based, kind of 360-style survey of diverse community members, teachers, students, and more, on December 4th, to complete that by December 14th, that's all underway, and I just would urge anybody in the community and beyond to, to respond to the survey. It's really easy, you just go to wnesu.org, and the first thing that pops up on the homepage is the survey, and it does not take very long to complete it at all. The Executive Committee plus the two board volunteers, Karen Blanchard and Jakes McCullough, are the ones who helped create the survey itself, and we're on schedule to meet now next Monday to review the results, and to then meet again with a draft report on January 2nd, and then to bring a report with recommendations to the full SU Board at our first regular meeting, which is January 17th. So that's just to bring everybody up to date, to say that we're on schedule with the community that worked on, under-earths people who've not completed it, to do so.
And
Sure, it came up at a meeting I was at the other day, where they were asking whether there is a differentiation between how the community looks at the superintendent, how the staff does, how the board does, if there's that differentiation at all next.
There is the ability, we've got the analytical tools, so that we'll be able to see how community members responded, how teachers responded, we'll have a total number and scale, and we'll also be able to differentiate by several groups, and then in addition to a statistical number rating that comes out of this process, there are also comments that people are free to write in on each of the, the questions that were related to actually Andy's goals and his contract, what he's literally responsible for, specified in the contract. This is only one part of our responsibility to provide guidance to the superintendent, he'll be producing some of the things, as will we, but this is one way to help everybody kind of get a measure of what, how we're doing against expectations and that, so. Anything else? Thank you, to that, thank you.
Cheryl, could you just remind me of all that time, the Monday, Monday meetings?
Or at the SU office. So everybody will see all the data that's on that committee, but everybody ultimately will see all of it, so it's an open process, and we all appreciate everybody's participation. On to New Business, that's Stacy, you've got something for us, a new
I do. I am pleased to be able to bring a special education teacher to the board for potential hire, her name is Margie Salavante, she's currently working at Landmark, has been a special education teacher in Philadelphia for several years, has an extensive background in leading, which is something that we are happy to have, she's done a lot of different things in a variety of places, she is coming out of the Vermont Learning Collaborative, which is an organization that helps schools find staffing and evaluation, offers trainings, we do belong to that as a district, she would be brought in at a master's plus 30 on step 18, and then the other request would be, the Vermont Learning Collaborative has a $5,000 finder's fee, so it would be requesting to pay that finder's fee to allow us to bring her onboard as well.
So we would entertain a motion, I need the language, if you could actually restate it for us, the name and the staff and such, if you could help us.
Sure. Margie Salavante, she would be coming in at a master's plus 30, step 18, in addition to providing the $5,000 finder's fee to the Vermont Learning Collaborative. um, in addition to providing, um, the five thousand dollar finder's fee to the Vermont Learning Collaborative. I'll move.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to make to hire Margie Salavante at a master's plus thirty on step eighteen for the position of special education at, um, the Bellows Falls Middle School, uh, while also paying the finder's fee of five thousand dollars to the Vermont, um, Higher Ed Collaborative.
Perfect. Thank you, T. Motion on the floor.
It's just that the higher ed is the Vermont Learning Collaborative.
Well, I wasn't sure if I could correct that.
Yeah. If that's okay with you, T.
Friendly amendment. Yeah. All right. So any discussion, any questions, any comments?
I think it's great that we have found someone for this position that's been open for a long time, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, and we'll take a vote, motion on the floor to make this hire as the motion stated. On Lynn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Party?
Yes.
Chris?
Oh, yes.
T? Jason?
Let's stay.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, she will be starting after the break.
Perfect.
Good.
Thank you. Outstanding. Uh, the next item on the agenda is review and approval of the budget for fiscal year twenty-five, and I'm gonna turn that over to Chris Kibbe, Chair of the Finance Committee, to make that presentation. Get us started.
Um, you wanna have a motion on the floor, and then I'll present.
All right, I entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five budget as presented to the W N E S U board. Uh, I entertain a motion to that effect. Karen Lanchard has made that motion.
It's named, yeah.
Okay, please, please give it to her. Uh, I'm about my.
It was seventeen million nine hundred twenty-eight thousand.
One hundred ninety-four.
Seventeen million nine hundred twenty-eight thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars.
Ninety-five, it says here. Oh, nine, nine, four. Okay. On mine. That's fine.
Right.
Which one is it?
It is. Sorry. It is, uh, seventeen million nine twenty-eight. Seventeen million nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
One ninety-four, is there?
Not, not one ninety-four.
Oh, just, just zero.
All right, okay.
So Karen has made the motion to approve the budget as presented in the amount of seventeen million nine hundred twenty-eight thousand. Correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion on the floor, any discussion? And, and Chris, in discussion, you might wanna provide some background.
Oh, yes. So my apologies for not being there. Like, it really snowed a lot up here. I'm all dressed up. I got here to go, right? Turned around.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, yeah. So, uh, obviously, I think you have this giant packet of information, and we're not gonna go through all that, but let me hit the high points of it and some general information, and then folks take it home and pour through it. I'm sure they will. Uh, this budget was passed unanimously, unanimously by the Finance Committee uh, last week. I think we all did it with kind of a sigh, but yeah. Um, the, the budget is technically down two million two hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars from last year, but that's only because there's a huge reduction in the grants coming in, which was almost four and a half million dollars.
Hmm.
Um, again, the, the apples-to-apples comparison for this year to previous year is really hard, because now pre-K is in the budget. Uh, and but it's also taken out as a, it's covered, it's washed as a Medicaid revenue, which you'll see on the revenue page, so. And, um, however, the, the important pieces are, there, there is one and really only one new position uh, that was a grant position from the ESER. Uh, we put the, uh, multi-tiered support system coordinator in uh, to the regular budget, and we agreed that we needed to build, uh, regular ed capacity to, to serve high-need students. Special ed is, is really clobbering us here. And, uh, this seemed like a, a, a smart way to try to, try to get a handle on this. All the other, uh, grant positions were are not in this budget, or they've been moved for consideration into the other, uh, member district budgets. Um, and in addition, we cut, um, or I should say Andy and his staff, cut, uh, a special ed administrator, uh, one position in the business office, uh, floating nurse, and, um, elementary special educator. Those positions, as it turned out, are, are all, all open. But, so they're out of the budget. That said, uh, the assessments are up from seventeen to twenty-four percent per district. And so now I direct your attention to, I think it's page forty in the packet that Jim gave you. Um, which is, am I, am I right?
It's going out right now, Chris.
What's that?
It's going out right now.
Okay.
You're getting pushy.
Yeah.
Right.
Everybody else need one there?
There's two, yeah.
We have a couple extras here. All right.
Okay. So, um, it's all right. There's not gonna be a test later on, but, but this is, these pages, these next couple of pages are the ones that obviously are important to you, because you're going to your member districts and, and here's, you know, the costs coming from the S U are outlined here. So, uh, the amount of the assessments is, uh, and this is on line seven of that page, I believe, is up one million one hundred forty-seven dollars and forty-seven thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars. Um, why is that? Well, uh, when we've been dealing with a lot of expenses that we cannot seem to do anything about. The health insurance is up sixteen percent. Isn't that right, Jim? Sixteen?
Sixteen point four.
Uh, worse, sixteen point four. So that across, across the board, um, affected many, many positions. Um, you know, all the paras, paraprofessionals are in this budget. A lot of them get health insurance, of course, teachers do, and administrators do. Um, my rough estimate was that that was about a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar impact right there. The bus lease is in there. That's one hundred sixty-seven thousand eighty-two dollars. Uh, nothing that we can do about that. We're committed to it. Um, transportation salaries are up a bit, quite a bit, over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, s- uh, and then there are salaries, uh, of course, they am, the multi-tiered support system position and other, uh, salaries, another hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus probably in those categories. Special ed is what is really clobbering us right now. Um, the tuition, special ed tuition is up five hundred thirty-four thousand dollars in this budget, um, which is Stacy's best estimate for, for what it's gonna cost for out-of-district placements for next year. Um, but on top of that, the, um, the revenues for special ed are down, and, um, they're down. The Act one seventy-three, which was the block grant legislation, which was passed a number of years ago, much to my chagrin. Um, although it did make some things easier about special ed and special ed accounting, uh, that's projected to be down three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars as a revenue just from last year or this year. But if you look at FY twenty-three, it's, it's, uh, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar difference from just two years ago. The only kind of bright side to that is that this special ed extraordinary uh, money revenue, uh, we're gonna get, we think, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, so that helped a little bit. So, there are a lot of things we couldn't do anything about. We, we tried to do some good things for students and, um, and to try to minimize the impact for the, to the districts, and I, uh, I wanna thank all the folks on the Finance Committee who are, really, everybody does a, a really good job of like looking closely through it and analyzing it, and you know, it's having conversations, and sometimes they're hard, but it's okay. I mean, we we get to the end, and it's like, well, this is kind of the best we can do. And also to Andy and Jim and Stacy and their staffs for all the work they've put into the budget. That's what I got.
Great. Thank you very much, Chris. Any questions or comments from anybody here?
Is there a question more for Jim? Uh, I think, I think Chris did a good job, very good job to, uh, of summary. Uh, Jim, do, do you have preliminary audit numbers for the W N E S U for two thousand twenty-three?
I do not. Um, expecting them next Wednesday. As I've said, I, I expect all the districts by next Wednesday.
Thank you. Yes, Jason.
Uh, Cheryl, I, I have a concern. Uh, my concern is to, obviously, the high school that I chair, um, that this assessment is going to hamstring administration at the high school to provide a budget, um, that is gonna educate the kids, um, and, um, also fix the facility. Um, and I, I really think that, uh, you know, when you look at Brockham, Athens, Westminster, you know, you're all, all gonna be burdened with a huge assessment, so it's, uh, it's tough for those principals in those schools and the staff in those schools, because they're going to feel it. Um, otherwise, it's just, let's just all, you know, pay more. And a- at what point is it gonna be to, to stop to just continue to pay more? Um, uh, I, I realize that the special ed and all the, the issues that we have, um, so I don't know what to do, other than I, I wish that, you know, I, I think we should go back and look at it some more. Is this early? Is this budget early? No? This is a high school. We have a meeting on the fourth and fifth, and so why, why are we approving it so early?
Well, I'll just answer from the Westminster.
Well, it's a critical input for the, for the other school boards.
That's, that's.
Period, like.
That's correct.
Chris, move.
That's, that's right.
It's not actually late.
Right, it is later than, than usual. Um, and I would just reinforce that the committee, Finance Committee, and I've served as a member of it, um, um, has met extensively and got through things with a lot of detail. It's, it's a very difficult situation, no, no question about it. To your point about why now, it is the case that each of the independent districts are waiting for these numbers, and in the case of Westminster, I started to say, we're required by the town to provide a final budget no later than, uh, January twelfth. And so we need to approve ours, and we needed these numbers, uh, to be able to do that. Any other comments or, or questions? I see T's hand up. Thank you. T, go ahead.
I just, I'm, I just wanna clarify, I don't know, um, J- Jason, what is your, what is the concern with the way this impacts the high school budget? Is that you don't think there's enough money put aside for the high school? I'm sorry, I don't understand, uh, what the concern makes. I just wanna make sure I understand your concern when we're looking at the budget.
Well, I, I'd actually, um, Cheryl, it's okay with you. I'd actually ask Mike to answer that question, because he's the guy that's helping us with the budget, um, and what impacts that's gonna have at our high school.
Um, thank you, Jason. Any assessment that pops twenty-something percent is a shocker. I mean, let's, let's be candid. But unfortunately, I think, and again, I'm the new kid on the block, but I think that we've got a kind of a perfect storm hitting us. I think we've lost from the political perspective. The defunding, as Jim has called it, the defunding of special ed, at the same time that our costs are going up. Um, that combined, but let's face it, there's been neglect in the past of certain things. Transportation is one of them. We have building issues in the high school and probably at the other facilities that are hitting us at the same time, so we're kind of getting squeezed on both ends, and the pain is gonna be felt, obviously, in the local, uh, budgets as these costs get passed through. Um, I think, you know, it's unfortunate, but I think you have to hold the line. I could go into a long discussion about how messed up I believe the funding mechanism is in the state of Vermont, but I will save that to our board. Um, but, you know, the reality is, this is, this makes the, the high school board a real challenge, because we're spending a lot of money on things that have nothing to do, per se, with the specific, uh, staff in the high school, but they're gonna be impacted, and uh, as you said before, we can just say, pass it, because other people are gonna spend, and we should spend too, and that's one of the dysfunctional aspects of the Vermont, uh, funding mechanism. I, 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 to me, it's, it's insane the way it's handled. Uh, the fact that Jim doesn't have all the data that he needs to put a, uh, a, a set of information to out to us as we're doing the budgeting process. I mean, it's, it's really dysfunctional, so uh, I don't know if I answered your question, but I think we're in a perfect storm situation, which is really difficult. Uh, and, you know, we have to decide as boards whether we're gonna dump this on the taxpayer and, you know, inflame the affordability issue that is already out there. Uh, you know, for a lot of folks in this community and future folks in this community, or whether they're gonna try to hold the line and, and do the best we can. And I think, I think, Jake said it before, I think, you know, we, we, Chris mentioned it, we did the best we could. Um, but there were some things outside of our control that, uh, you know, that made these numbers kind of, I, I'll be.
June has her hand up. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, I just have a clarified question. On page forty, uh, lines three through six. So is that twenty-four point thirty-one percent what the high school assessment is going to go up?
Yes. It's a wow. You know, on a, on a seven million dollar budget, that's that's a normal year plus increase.
Brockingham's nineteen point twenty-nine. Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? There's a motion on the floor. T, yes?
I would just, I, I, you know, one of the, one of the ma- big concerns I had, uh, I think this perfect storm, part of this perfect storm is we're coming off of, uh, ESER. Uh, the, uh, you can see on the, the, Chris pointed out, I think, what'd you say, two point three million or three million or something different between seventeen-nine and twenty-two, so it's two point three. Uh, and I thought one of the big struggles we were gonna have, uh, with this budget was, uh, fighting with Andy over ESER-funded positions that are, that landed here, and and I, uh, I, I'm pleased to say that, uh, uh, that, uh, I think Andy, Andy did a very good job of, uh, coming off this largesse, uh, to, back to, uh, to reality. So, uh, there's just, uh, uh, some big numbers here for. Uh there's just uh uh some big numbers here for all the reasons Mike cited and. Uh uh it's just a, it's just a tough one that we're gonna have to carry to the uh to the voters. I think we've learned some things. Uh I think the uh, you know, one of the things that you can't, when when you look at this and you look at all of the. All of the budgets and all of the stuff that gets funded locally versus gets funded. Uh uh by the state and federal government, uh, you know, you're looking at uh seventeen million dollars here and. Uh and that's just the ESU budget. That doesn't count the other uh four budgets that we've been putting together. And we have a tremendous number of people uh employed. Uh and in our buildings, we have huge numbers of people, and I think the, uh I'm hoping that in the uh in the future that. That the administration will will really look closely at at how we're delivering. Uh uh services that we acquire, uh like one-on-one staffing and things like that. I think that. Um uh, you know, we we have to, we have to protect these children and 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 do the best job of to educate them, but I think. I think we can, we can do it in a little bit more efficient way, and I hope that's, that's a lesson we'll all take from here. I don't know if that helps or not, but I I just do think that, as I said, I was really worried about the transition off of Esser. And and I think, uh I think Andy handled it, and his staff handled very well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Uh Jim?
One more. I'm a newbie, so I'm trying to understand this. The high school has, has this discussion ever been brought up? The high school is the hub for the transportation services, so they use our electricity, the transportation office is here. It's the hub for the food service. How, has that ever come in? Have we ever gotten a kickback? For that? I mean, why, why should we pay for all of the electricity when the buses are the whole districts? Why should the high school have to pay for all of that?
The kickback is your costs first are parsed out to the towns. Okay, so that the same people that are paying the Rockingham taxes and the Westminster tax are paying the high school back. So it's.
So in the, i- i- in essence, Rockingham's going to go up nineteen point eighty-nine plus a portion of the high schools?
I it sounds like people are trying to comment. Uh Chris and then Team, go ahead.
Yeah, I I think Jim i- is exactly right. The 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 high school costs are dispersed to all of us. And so when costs go up to high school, they are allocated out, so it. I mean, it might make you feel better to get a, you know, a cash kickback, but you know what? We'd be taking it out of one pocket and. So that's just not the way it works, you know. It's pointless to do that.
Any other comment, Chris, then I'll move to Team. Anything else from you right now? Chris?
I beg, I beg your pardon?
Oh, any, any, are you complete with your comment?
Yeah, I'm none. Thank you.
For now. Okay, uh Team, anything you wanted to add?
I I was just gonna say what Chris is, that we're all, all the sending districts pay into the um pay into those costs for the high school.
Okay.
Where else would the money come from if the sending districts weren't paying for it? Right?
Okay, um there's a motion on the floor, but there's no more discussion. I'll call for a vote. Ready? Okay. All right, I think I'll start in the room uh this time. Mr. McColl, your vote.
Yes.
Okay, Chrisa?
Yes.
Uh Jim?
No.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
Uh Team?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Party. Okay, well, the motion passes. I wanna thank everybody uh for all the hard work. Yes, thanks, everyone. Okay, the next item is the topic of safety, and I hope that goes to you.
Uh so, one of the things um that we've been looking at is just, we are seeing. An increase in students with, that are dysregulated, um and it's impacting our staff, it's impacting our other students. And um and the teachers have raised this as an issue with us, and uh we definitely want uh safety is our most important. Uh and we have been working um. Through uh this post-COVID time, knowing that our students are are coming in with social emotional dysregulation. Uh and and a lot of it is, some students just haven't even. They haven't learned how to be students. I mean, that's the best way I could probably put it. Um but um some of their behaviors are 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 at a higher level. And um we've uh. Shaw and I talked and are looking to take a deeper dive into what what is that reason, what's going on? Uh what are we doing to uh protect our staff and our students um and make sure that um school's safe? And so one of the things I've done is I've asked uh Brett Bishop, who came and spoke to you all uh from both his schools. Uh around possibly helping lead a discussion um with the board around an inquiry base around um safety. Uh it would help drive also part of our strategic plan that we're putting out there, um and to ensure. Uh that uh we do have a safe environment uh for our students and look at the different things that we are doing to make sure that they all alive, so. Uh I think we just wanted to bring that to you. I'm I'm working with Brad on some dates, uh possibly. If he can't do it, we'll look at uh possibly someone else who might be able to. Uh work with us on that. Uh but we wanted to, you know, acknowledge it uh in conversations with teachers. Uh you know, it's a main point for them, parents, it's a main point for students.
Any comments or questions yet? We'll come back to you with more information about that possibility. Uh it's it's a real problem, and when Brett came and he talked with us about. The instructional leadership teams that has been established in each each of the schools. You know, we got interested in hearing from the high school, from individual schools, but part of what he was talking about. Was how those teams can help focus on real problems. And so when we thought about a real problem that's affecting everybody, we thought he might actually help us as an ESU board. Dive into that, and in turn, we might be able to have a better understanding of what's going on in each of the buildings. So we'll come to you with a suggested process.
Yeah.
Um but I think there's uh this real appeal and not keeping it abstract, but having us think together about. Maybe some tangible ways to provide some support. Right?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Next topic, student performance. Is that related?
I I would say it's, the two, the two go hand in glove, right? Uh and so uh we know that if folks aren't feeling safe. And 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 students are dysregulated, right, they're not able to learn, and we need students to be able to learn. Uh we know. Um, you know, as as Kelly O'Ryan has pointed out, that uh there are challenges here with our high school students, uh with a. A portion of our high school students who are reading below grade level. We have students uh throughout our district that are reading below grade level. As I said earlier, um reading um as a southeast region, we believe it is the fundamental basis for all learning. Their students cannot learn, they cannot access their education. Um and so uh Deb, Hardane, and Shelley Wilson, because we've both been kind of into their wheelhouses, what they're doing for us. Um have been presenting data uh to the different boards, uh but what we'd like to do is really take a deep dive again, same idea. Of looking at some real specifics, uh because we look at all the different data points, uh but really try and hone in on a piece of it. We know with with our reading levels, uh we had a um in a time in this district where we. Moved and and started working on a a non-research-based reading program uh prior to my tenure. Um we've identified that as a possible area of deficit for our students. We tried to, you know, we implemented corrections. Uh to work on a much uh deeper understanding for our teachers. Um on how to teach uh students how to learn and how to identify that, um around, also around literacy, which includes writing. Uh but then also identify those real specific areas. Stacy, you're helping out here, because I always get these wrong. Um like, you know, like if we're, we're diving into, does a student understand ending consonant sounds? Or middle vowel sounds, as opposed to looking at a real broad picture of a tennis student read, right? Because if a student can decode, they're gonna be able to access much better. So we're, we're taking that deep dive, and so those are the second pieces of. Of trying to work with Brett is is doing that same thing. So before, it's much more informed what we're doing, has an understanding of what the different schools are trying to do. Uh because they all have their own, I think, they've all identified a different area under their instructional leadership. Uh teams, uh but how does it all tie together again? Again, going back to that strategic plan that we're trying to do, so we're backing it out to everyone. Then our community has a fuller understanding of the direction we're going out to um improve student performance.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, mine.
Earlier this year, uh we've seen some announcement that the testing that was done in the spring of twenty twenty-three was embargoed. Um this may not be the same exact thing, but uh.
Yes, that is the, that's the uh.
BT cap.
The BT cap, which is replace S back.
Yeah.
Uh which is the state testing piece. So we've been able to release those um the the, a little bit of the parents, but we're not able to. Do the broader piece. Uh there seems to be some, the state is continuing to do some um analysis on their end. Um looking at the comparison, so comparing student outcomes to state norms, but also national norms. Uh it seems that there seems to be an issue there.
Yeah.
We could not have predicted that. I'm being very sarcastic there. Um, you know, uh, we did petition that we. Asked that we not have that test this year, this past year, because the state rollout was uh not very good. Um trying to be politically correct.
Surprise.
Um but um, so they've held off on releasing those, so we can't compare. We can look at our student data, but. Um but um there's stories around the di- around the state of some people, like they have a zero. Like for a class, you know, for a cohort of students, what would that mean? Like, did data get lost? We don't know, and so. Uh as soon as we get that available, but we're, we're focusing on our local assessments, because we know, we know our local assessments. Uh we've been doing it for years, so that gives us the uh the longitudinal data that we need. So that's what we're focused on.
And I think Deb Cardane, in one of our prior meetings, this could be months and months ago, shared some data across grades. And it was math, and it was English, I think, the two. And is that data that's gonna be updated or shared with us or?
Sure, yeah, we we um um. Like I said, she's been going after the local boards. Uh we haven't scheduled something with the high school board. Um and part of what the high school board, what the complexity is, you only test, we, in the past, have only tested students in their ninth grade. Under our local assessment, because, um and so this year, we are looking to roll out testing up through. Eleventh grade. We can go to twelve, but I I think the plan is to go through eleventh grade and test students. Um and then next year, we would add the twelfth grade, because those eleventh graders would be twelfth graders, so we just have some longitudinal data. Um but to start tracking students uh the way we haven't always tracked students at the high school level. Um so that we would have that, and again, going back to informing teachers. On how they can adjust their teaching.
Sure.
For intervention to provide for students, so.
When do you think that data would be available?
So we would be looking to um do it in the spring, uh because the fall's already passed.
Yeah.
Uh for the high school, uh but that's the next uh piece. So we're, we're constantly progress monitoring. But the two big chunks, we do, we do a fall and we do a spring.
The next testing window would be mid-January to beginning of February, and then we have to look through the data.
Uh Team, I see your hand up. Are you true pronouncing like?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Team, go ahead, please.
I'm just confused as to why the W, we, we've seen our VT cap scores in my district, so I'm confused as to why. They are embargoed in W N E S U.
I I have not received anything to say that I can release them, so that's the reason why. Perhaps I missed something, I don't know, but I I I did email it and ask if I could release it, and I will know, so.
Okay, so just to speak to the local results as a point of information, the Westminster board did your presentation. With Deb Carde, Carde and Shelley Wilson, and and uh our local interventionists or specialists. Uh last Thursday night, and and learned a lot about the results, and then we have scheduled our. Our leadership, our uh instructional leadership team to come to our board meeting on January four. So we've kind of got a district-wide perspective, and then how our kids are fitting in there, and then we're gonna dive in even more deeply. This kind of rose in part out of Brett Bishop's presentation here. So we're only one district. Just wanted to share that we're looking at the data and seeing, and we saw one remarkable. Uh a study of a student who through that intervention has just really increased in proficiency most significantly. It's a way that we as board members can stay with water top to the extent possible. Uh Team, did you or Karen wanna add anything to that?
I was thinking actually, oops.
Go ahead, Karen.
No, I was just thinking about some of the data around safety, actually, that we looked at through Panorama. You know what I mean? Where the parent, where there were some families that felt it was a safe place, and the students felt it was a safe place. So I don't know sort of whether to segregate and take a look at that and, you know, with, but I, when you mentioned the issues about safety. That's what went into my mind, and um so there may be a way for other, you know, the school boards to be able to look. Anyway, the way they did that for us.
Okay, any, anything else right now?
Yeah, I mean.
Oh, go ahead, Team, please.
Like, as a, as a parent in the district and as school board member and a member of the community, I, I had expressed a lot of concerns during our previous. Um their previous administrator about the program that was referred to before that we were using that wasn't based on science. And I think right now, we are in, like, headed in the really right direction. And I think it might not look miraculous at first, but people are using research-based methods, they're using scientific curriculums. Like, everything we're doing right now is moving us in the right direction, and so it's, as a parent, it is a huge relief, and I think that. Even if we don't see massive gains, kids are going to be making gains with the um work that teachers are doing, and it's a lot of hard work for teachers. So I think that um to change your practice this much is pretty huge, and so um. I'm really thankful that the teachers are putting in the work to do it, because it's a huge lift.
Thank you. That takes us to director's comments. I'm gonna start with Jason.
Perfect. Um. So I was talking to uh one of our Senator reps today and. Talking to him about Act one twenty-seven and how it's gonna impact all of us, because he or she goes back. Couple weeks uh to the, you know, to a month earlier or whatever. Um and. Really, this person had no clue that how Act one twenty-seven is going to. Actually hurt our specific school system, because we have so many special ed kids um in the school and. And. My point is, I don't wanna count on them to help us fix our schools on our level. Because what we did around PCBs at the high school, you know, Kelly, Andy, myself. Mike, June, Priscilla, we took it upon ourselves to get that school open as quickly as possible. And if we continue to take our assessment from the W N E S U and then just, okay, well, there's nothing we can do about it in the local school boards. Um and we're just gonna spend more and spend more. We already saw the disaster of Esser that was, because we had a ton of money that we just could have spent, but.
you know, it didn't fix the problem. Throwing money at the problem doesn't fix the problem. Managing the buildings fixes the problem. And I know, and I can speak specifically to this high school because I don't know any other principals, that we have the right person on board who's putting in the work currently and working hard to fix the problem, not just for the students, but for everybody. And I'm challenging our school board, the high school board, not to just throw money at the problem. I want to, we want to do it.
Right.
We want to fix this building. We want to educate the kids. And we want to save money for the taxpayers, not save money, but the right amount of money. Because, you know, there's an affordability problem in Vermont. Whether we want to agree with that or not, throwing money at the problem does never fix the problem. So I encourage everyone to write their local senators. Thank you.
Joe Callan?
Good meeting. I'm glad I made it down the hill. Now that I know that.
I'm all set. Thank you.
I was sitting here thinking about all the issues that our families and students have that impact them and all the issues that our faculty then has to, as a result, also have to deal with from the social, emotional issues and dysregulation. Educating the students to a level where they can be self-sufficient when they leave our, all of our schools, where they can become people that interact with us as adults in our community and where they learn all the things that they need to do to be able to become truly independent people. A truly daunting task. A part of our job then is to look at the fiscal responsibility, throw those dollars at our, at our schools, if you want to call it that, and provide a good, sound education here in a place where they can feel sta- safe and like they can learn. And I think we, we are trying really hard to do that. We're in such a tumultuous type of environment. And if we look at our world, where people are dealing with foreign countries, our people in Washington are trying to decide where they will put their money and that's a huge boot camp on all of us as a result. We are very fortunate to be in the community we are, are in and not deal with some of those issues that I know are impacting other places, but we need to be sure that we send prayers for, for each and every individual and are, be thankful for each one that is being able to survive and succeed. Just keep those people in your prayers. Keep our teachers, our staff and our students and our community members all there as well as we go into the holiday seasons. Thank you.
Happy holidays to everybody. We will, we probably won't see some of us until the new year, but but again, to our boards and our teachers and students and staff, have a very happy holiday.
Thank you, James. I'll go to the screen now. Teen, any director's comments, please?
Just thank you to the finance committee for putting in all the work.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Hardy?
Well, Jim's comments. Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you. Lynn?
I get a Teen on thanking the finance committee. Sounds like a horrendous amount of work and it sounds like we still have a ways to go on figuring out how to make budgets work. And Merry Christmas to all. We'll see you after the new year.
Thank you. Chris?
Happy holidays. Have a, have a wonderful holiday, everybody. Get some rest. I'm going to try to.
I think I'll echo that to everyone. Have a healthy holiday season. Come back refreshed. We've got lots to do. And so thanks to each of you. Be welcome. That's it. The meeting is adjourned at seven forty-five.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.